I'd like to call this meeting to order and take a motion to go into executive session to discuss a memorandum of agreement with the REA Teachers Chapter regarding contract language changes to facilitate instructional models and use during the 2021 school year. And Jennifer was second by Nikki, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We're now in executive session.
Are we going?
Yes, we are. All right. We'll head down the hall. I'd like to recall this meeting to order and ask all that are willing and able to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Start with some introductions. Good evening, I'm Diane McBride, Board President, and we'll go to my right.
Good evening, I'm Karen Flanagan, School District Clerk.
Good evening, Jennifer Laird, School Board Member.
Good evening, May Abdullah, Board Member.
Good evening, Nellana Salma, Assistant Superintendent of Student and Family Services.
Hi, Andy Whitmore, Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Operations.
Good evening, Dina Wilson, Assistant Superintendent for Instruction.
Good evening, Pat McHugh, Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources and School Accountability.
Hello, James O'Brien, Board Member.
Good evening, Nikki Laplaca, Board Member.
George D'Amartow, Attorney for the District.
Bo Wright, Superintendent of Schools.
All right, I'd like to remind everyone to pull the microphone as close to you as possible to be heard via the live stream as well, because even though we may hear each other, it's not necessarily picking up on the stream, and we want everybody out there to be able to hear us, so thank you for that. Agenda review, any additions or changes to our agenda? All right. Any announcements? All right, I don't see any. So this would normally bring us to the Board Member Report from our student representatives, but I don't see them here this evening. They were with us at the last meeting, so we may hear from them the next time. This brings us to our public forum. This is where audience members can address the board on items of interest not on the agenda. If you wish to speak regarding an item on the agenda, please raise your hand while that item is under discussion, and a reminder that we would like to keep it to a three-minute limit to, in order us to get through our agenda in a timely fashion. I do have a card here from Mr. Mike Keita. Would you like to come to the microphone up front, please?
Can you hear me?
No, I can't hear you.
You can't? Is that better?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. So, obviously, pretty accustomed to coming to these, and we'll continue to come. If it sounds like a broken record, I think it's good. The push will continue to show that Mark, to see that we're in his corner and get to him what he needs and deserves, and to still understand here and make everyone else understand that the plane and learning field is not level here, and he needs to see it's okay to voice your concern in a public forum, to get people to act and to develop real solutions. So what has passed, three months, since we've proactively tried to push for this upcoming school year? First quarter obviously ends Friday already, which obviously, just like this whole year, it's a blur, right? It's gone faster for everything. No change, no real discussion for a solution to provide the proper individual education for Mark and other students like him, I think. I think every angle and part should be looked at and discussed to figure out how to get these kids that need in-person instruction in more than two days a week. If you realize or count the numbers, just to put it out there, it's 14 days of in-person instruction for the first quarter that he will receive. I don't know how a kid with a learning disability even stays on track, let alone succeeds in that, or tries to teach himself with that disability. You break it out and add in the second quarter as it's projected, that's 33 days in total of in-person instruction. Again, how does he not stay on a successful track and not fall further behind as another quarter has already passed his education by, that he can't get back? Question on transportation. I think, you know, that was the big key, right, of one of the hurdles of K through six, not getting there five days a week. I've personally seen less kids at the bus stop, or whatever it might be. So has numbers, or has it been kept track for attendance on bus transportation and ridership over the first quarter or two months? Is there that extra space to maybe squeeze in if that was one of the biggest hurdles in the beginning of the year? So I'd like to see that and see where that, what that is. Are kids really taking the bus, or everybody say that they were, or whatever the case might be? For most people, I've heard that the kid, there's very few kids on the bus, and more kids probably being driven, so I'd like to see that. Question on ICOT numbers, just to look at every specific angle, how to chisel away to try to get this select group of kids in there then more than two days a week, specifically in grades four through six where he falls. How many kids are actually deemed special-ed kids in those classrooms? What does it actually look like to take a small step forward to get those handful of kids in that, you know, extra days of that, whatever it might be, repeat, or just in school, in person? And so, again, goes to every little angle to try to chisel away to get them more in-person instruction. I made the point before, and I still see it, the teachers are working twice as hard as you probably know and see, and I hear that and I see that, and I can, I feel for that, because they are trying to do their job at the best of their abilities. It's the same number of students, and the students are getting half the level of in-person or instruction at all, which is unfortunate. That's not a recipe for success, or sound like a best practice to me. And unfortunately, the students that suffer the most and can't handle that are students like Mark, that have a challenge of learning from the computer only, with little to no guidance of instruction on their virtual days. And I know my wish, and I know Mark's wish as well, is that this board and the administration show the same level of effort he puts forth in the classroom for the two days a week he's able to attend. And obviously, we've pushed for that for three months, and will continue to push for that, but obviously, we know, we see if one quarter's passed already. Add that up with what's last year, you know, it's really a struggle, and we'll continue to push, and hopefully to start seeing some real solutions here to be discussed. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak during public forum? All right, seeing none, that brings us to consent agenda items for routine matters, items 7A through E, and I'll take a motion to accept those. Jennifer, Mrs. Laird, Mr. O'Brien, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. I apologize, I did not note at the beginning of this meeting that Mrs. Strzynski is under the weather this evening, so I apologize for that. This brings us to personnel actions, item eight. I'll take a motion to approve. Mrs. Laplaca, Mrs. Abdullah, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. All right. This brings us to item nine, our memorandum of agreement, action pertaining to the approval of a MOA with the REA Teachers Chapter regarding contract language changes to facilitate the instruction and use during 2021 school year. A motion by Mrs. Laplaca. Mrs. Laird seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. All right. This brings us to item 10, our workshop on our Secondary Program Course Guide.
Okay, well, it's hard to believe, as we're underway here with the 2021 school year, that we're already looking ahead to next school year, and tonight you have in front of you the 2021-2022 Secondary Program Course Guide to Review. As you remember, a few years ago, we did a major overhaul to this program guide when we did the reconfiguration and opened up our junior high schools. So since that time, there has not been any changes to the formatting and the layout of the course guide. I'm happy to report that we continue to offer this course guide online as soon as the program guide gets approved, hopefully at the next board meeting. It goes live the next day for our students and parents to review. So it really has allowed us to speed up the process of making this available. So at this current time, we only print 20, about 200 hard copies a year, and obviously, our staff still likes to have a hard copy, especially the counselors and administrators, but we get very few requests for a hard copy. We have them available for parents who do want them, they just contact the main office, but for the most part, we're finding every year, less and less are being asked for. So we've had great success with the online capability of the program guide. With that being said, there's only a few things that I want to bring to your attention as far as programming for the upcoming year. I'll start with the junior high school. And I always say, if you want to get a good overview of the junior high school courses that are offered, on page 18 does a real nice job of highlighting the seventh grade, eighth grade, and ninth grade offerings, and it's coded in a way that you see which courses are required and which courses are electives for our students to choose from. When we opened up our junior high schools a few years ago, we did offer quite a few electives, and what we found over the last few years, especially when we sit at tallies every spring, is that we were offering so many electives that was starting to spread the enrollment, that when the summer came, we didn't have to close some sections because we didn't have enough of students in a course. So we were offering more than really what the enrollment in each of the schools could really fill. And then students had to go in and make their second choices and so forth, so we decide each year to streamline that. And I feel as though that now, after three years, we've really have a good handle on which electives the students are, was like I say, voting with their feet, because they're the ones that they're registering for. And also, we are very conscientious about the staff, because we try not to spread our staff too thin and traveling. So you will see that this year, we are just streamlining a few more elective courses in the technical, technology area. We're only offering two tech courses for next year, and then at the ninth grade, we'll continue to offer three. We originally offered the same three electives at ninth grade and eighth grade, but then what was happening is when they got to ninth grade, sometimes they took all these tech courses in eighth grade, and there was no way for a sequence. So we're just streamlining that, still offering the same courses, but only two for our eighth graders and three for our ninth graders. In addition, computer applications will only be offered at the senior high school moving forward. So just some minor adjustments there to the electives to streamline our process. Okay? At the senior high school, I'll bring your attention to Family Consumer Science. Historically, we have had three courses that we offer there, as well as our FACS 7 and our FACS 8. And as you know, students need to be taking their FACS courses as one of their options to fulfill their CTE requirements at the middle school level of seventh and eighth grade. And at the senior high school, we've had three courses historically, food science, child and adult development, and introduction to foods and nutrition. What we're doing this year, or going into next year, I should say, because this is about next year, is that we will not be offering family and consumer science courses, per se, at the senior high school. The food science course is being moved over to science, because students are already receiving a science credit for that, and either a science teacher or a FACS teacher has historically taught that. And the child and development course is going to be a health course, and we currently now are using our health teachers to teach that course, because family consumer science teachers are hard to hire these days, and we're using those teachers predominantly at the junior high school. And then the food and nutrition program, we are removing from the program, and it will not be offered, because when we did an audit of all the courses in family consumer science this past year, we found that that curriculum in the food and nutrition is very similar to our FACS 8 program. It was basically the same course with just some minor adjustments. So that is one of the major changes. FACS will be concentrated at grade seven and eight, and that's where we'll put our FACS teachers, so that they can be available to be offering those courses to our seventh and eighth graders, and then the food science goes to science, and child and adult development will be going to the health. So the two of the three courses are still being offered, just under different content areas. And it's just a pattern that's evolved, because unfortunately, family consumer science teachers...
You can't find them.
You can't. It's not an area that colleges are providing programming in. With that being said, this past year, we did provide a health online course quickly. We put it together. Our health teachers did a great job working with our Director of Science and Health, and we'll be continuing that on moving forward, just like we do with the civics and economics. The only other thing I think we want to make sure that everyone's aware of is that we continue to really publicize and encourage our students who take business courses to take the sequence, so that they would be eligible for the CT endorsement. That is something that the board was heavily involved in about four or five years ago, so we're continuing to make sure students are taking those courses, starting in ninth grade, and following the pattern through the senior high school. So that is something our counselors will continue to work closely with parents and students. We do have some courses that we'll only be offering every other year, just a few electives, again, trying to streamline our enrollment patterns, so that we're not sitting with students, only a few students in a course, and not able to offer it. So you'll notice in the book, there are a few that will say we're going to offer on an every other year pattern. And then English 12, starting next year, we are going to make it a full-year course, opposed to two semestring courses. We have found with time, we do that currently with our co-taught English courses, and based on student feedback, this comes through the student council process every year, as well as with our teachers, we're finding that the students would prefer to stay with the same teacher throughout the year. And we're going to be embedding the two different electives in the units in just a one grade 12 course. That will help with scheduling, especially when our seniors want to take courses at our local colleges to, at seniors, that way their schedule's not changing from semester to semester due to an English change. So there's multiple reasons that we felt as though that it was appropriate to have all our seniors take their English 12 as a full-year course, opposed to two semester courses, like we currently have been doing with our co-talk classes. So that, I think, summarizes all the significant changes that I wanted to bring to your attention. Questions regarding anything addressed or anything you saw in the course description book?
I have a question. I know last year, you talked about the different math options that we were hoping to do. I don't see them here, so has that been completely dropped, or are we trying to figure out how to implement them further down the line?
Yep. So the AMPT courses were the courses that we did come to and explain to the board that we're looking at doing for the next couple of years, and the curriculum work was going to happen last spring. Due to our emergency school closing, we were not able to spend the time doing the curriculum work, or having them attend the training, and due to the cost of the program, because it required the cost to be co-taught, two teachers, two periods, that we decided, when we made those reductions in the spring around budget, that this was an area that, like I like to say, and I told the counselors, it's on hold. It's not like we're not going to offer it, but it's, we were not going to be able even to offer it next year, because all that course training would have to occur this year, and due to COVID, the training isn't even being offered right now. So it's on hold. I did have that note here, I had it circled, I missed that one.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions? All right. So this will come back to us...
So next week, you will take a vote on this as a consent item, and then we'll move forward with the process.
All right. If you have any questions in between now and then, you know where to send them to. You sent Mrs. Wilson there.
Yeah, just a shout out to the program directors, the counselors, the teachers that give feedback. This is definitely a team effort. It starts in August, and I'm very proud of the courses that we offer and the hard work that goes into it. So kudos to the staff for all the hard work that goes into developing these programs and continually offering them.
This brings us to the superintendent's report.
Okay. There were a number of items that were submitted as written reports. They are the school accountability report, the student enrollment summary, out-of-district placements, the demographic trends report, class size report, and an update regarding Cub Care. Are there any questions regarding any of those submitted written items?
Doesn't look like it.
Okay. Then I just have a couple of items that I believe are noteworthy under oral information, one being the completion of the Fall Parent Satisfaction Survey. We had over 1,800 parents submit surveys, which is by far the best completion rate that we've had for any survey that we've submitted in my time here. So thank you to the folks who completed that. We're in the process of tabulating results, and so we'll be sharing them internally this week, and then we'll be compiling and summarizing and communicating with our families, hopefully by the end of next week. The other item that I wanted to just put on your radar is the, is just a revisitation of the capital improvement plan. As you'll remember, obviously, voters approved the budget last spring. The board subsequently approved the transfer to capital in support of various projects throughout the district, which include roof upgrades, upgrade to fire alarms, clock systems in certain buildings, along with other classroom and building enhancements, one of them being the Roth locker rooms. So we were in a place where we'd like to move forward with the design of those projects, with a target completion date of 2022. Are there any questions? And are you okay to move forward with our planning? That's, we just want to make sure that everyone is okay with us moving forward into the design stage.
See everybody nodding yes.
Okay. Then we will plan to do that. Thank you very much. That concludes the superintendent's report.
All right. Brings us to new business, the board budget, first quarter report. Any questions on that? Not a lot going on, seeing we are not able to go to conferences or different trainings in person. I will mention that this weekend for me is the business meeting for our state association. I had my training yesterday, an hour and a half. It'll be interesting, because they're anticipating 255 of us on a Zoom meeting to conduct the business of the state association, so we'll see how that goes.
Have fun.
I remember, I kind of put my hand up for that, didn't I? At my end, the orientation went really, really well, and so, and I bring that up because to attend the business meeting, it's free, so there was no dollars being spent on that piece, so I'll let you know how it goes. All right. This brings us to item 13, our board member reports, and the first one up is the information exchange, which Mrs. Strzynski would have reported on, but maybe Ms. Salma can give us the details of that meeting.
Sure. At this time, Russian Vieta was on display, so Diane did a great job in terms of presenting to the information exchange group on keeping equity and inclusion in mind as they reopen school. She talked about some of the work that we did this summer as well, and as we move forward, even with mental health. So she intertwined mental health, equity, and inclusion all in one presentation. And the feedback that we got was that it was a great presentation, and folks wrote us some emails and said, "Thank you." That was one of the best presentations they had.
And my understanding is RH will be presenting again an information exchange down the road if...
Yes, we have two other presentations that we've signed up for, because again, our interest is to really brand our district and really tell people about the good things that are happening here. As we sat in Diversity and Inclusion Steering Committee, many of the individuals sitting around the table were giving us credit for all of the things that we're doing here, and it's time that we also let people know what we are doing. And so in January, we are presenting on ENL, and then again in April, we're thinking about doing something with community relations.
Great. And those folks have done an awful lot of work in community relations, so we can toot their horn for them. All right. Next up is Instructional Space Committee.
That is me, and we went through all the reports that were actually submitted through Bo's update in detail, and it was a quite interesting conversation, because we're looking at, we're not comparing apples to apples anymore. We're looking at two different models from the previous data to this year, and now we need to figure out, are we going to use this year's data, or are we going to figure out some formula to bump it up, or, because enrollment's way down, which was very unexpected. So the questions that people asked were great. They wanted to know how many more homeschoolers we had this year versus last year, and what percentage of them are new, and what grade levels. They also wanted to know the percentage of RLA per school, which was interesting to see from each, from each individual school, what percentage that they had sign up for the RLA. It's going to be an interesting conversation when it comes down to how to use this data, so that's what we'll go over next time, so. Did I miss anything, Pat?
Oh.
Next up is the Henrietta Youth Asset Team Meeting. I don't know if they met or not.
I did not touch base with Anita, so I'm not sure.
No worries. I don't think they're meeting the same way, just like a lot of groups. All right. Monroe County School Board Labor Relations.
May was able to attend in my stead.
Yes. It was, the topic was unemployment benefits and the issues that caused by COVID-19. We had two presenters, one from Churchill Childline Central School District, and the second gentleman was from BOSI's. They talked about what type of unemployment benefits are out there, and who's eligible, and what the criteria's are for the denial. They went through the denial process and the timeline, and how the New York State Department of Labor was overwhelmed with the amount of claims submitted. They actually had to hire extra contractors and vendors to handle the backlog process. They talked about, they actually enlisted the help of Assemblyman Harry Ronson when they couldn't get through to the Department of Labor, and he was gracious to offer them a contact person who can, they can submit their inquiries, the future inquiries to them. At the end, they talked about the future topics and presentations, and Becky Schultz might enlist or volunteer you guys to do two presentations. I think one is already on the agenda, but she might have mentioned, she's going to ask Andy or Pat to present another topic.
Yeah, Becky did call, so we've had some conversations about that.
Yes.
Good deal. Good stuff going on in RH, so, yeah. Next up is the Equity Inclusion Steering Committee. May and I both sit on that. Continuing our work in our subgroups with our needs assessment projects. Do you have... Continuing, continuing our work in our subgroups with our needs assessment projects, having our breakout sessions of different groups, talking about different areas, challenges, even some successes. We'll be looking to put strategies to them. All of this is a way to kind of prioritize so as we formulate our plan that comes back to the board for our, looking at for, for next year's scope of work. So, you know, the large group, the groups come back to the large group, they kind of share out and report. There's been some really good conversation. I think people are starting to feel good about what is happening from, from the group, small groups going out and the work that's happening. People taking those challenges and risks and moving forward in, in this topic. May, anything else you can think of?
I think you got it.
Yeah. Just, it's really nice to see more people involved. We've had a lot of new people come on this year. They bring a lot to the table. And I think with that, it helps everyone step back and think about things in, in a different light sometimes. We forget and we slide back into the way you think, but it gives you the opportunity to pull back and go, oh, there's a different way to think about this. Not that anybody's way of thinking is wrong, it's just, you know, there are other ways, things to look at. So it's been, I haven't really enjoyed that process, to, to grow and to learn and to feel the different things about the topics, so.
We have 52 members now.
I know.
Under steering committee. And the next thing that U of R will be doing is doing some focus groups with students because their voices are truly important. So we wanted to say that that's going to be happening.
And the group's really happy about that because that's a piece that we've been saying for quite a while is we need to have more student voice involved in, in the conversation as we focus on our students.
Yeah. A lot of good work happening and...
Yeah, it's exciting work.
Exciting, yeah.
All right. That brings us to MPEC. And May, you want to report out?
I don't actually have my notes with me, I expected...
You know, it was, in my, in my mind, it was just more about the fact that we had Diane win with us again to report out about what's been going on with the Equity Inclusion Committee. And I forget how many people were with us.
Twenty-three.
Yeah.
I actually counted.
Which is like, I knew it was a lot and it's been, it's a lot more than it's been in past years and it was so exciting to see and...
Lot of parents, yeah, new parents.
Yep. Well, the challenge is to the group at the end of each meeting is if you found this information helpful, please share and bring somebody else to the meeting. And they really took it to heart and then brought folks to the meeting, which is really great because then Diane was able to express what we, the Equity Inclusion Committee is doing, what the district is doing. And I think those parents were happy to see the progress we were making and understanding that we have a ways to go, but together with, with their input as well, we're going to make some good strides.
We're trying to bring the district priorities alive for folks.
Yep.
So that they are clear in terms of the work that's happening. When we say it's a district priority, the seriousness of the work and all of the, you know, the togetherness, the collaboration that's happening and, and why we're focusing on it. So it's not just on paper, it's actually being able to see the work. And I think the parents appreciated that because some of them frankly didn't know that a lot of this stuff was happening, so it was a good way for them to get the information.
And I, I think that everybody really gets it that this is not the sprint. This is going to be a marathon to do it right. And we want to do it right and we want to be the leaders in doing it, so. Exciting meetings lately, I've been enjoying them. All right, is there anything else? I'm like, kind of like looking at my watch going, what happened here? Our last meeting, we had a very, very, very full agenda and we had policies, so that took us a while to do that justice as well. So anybody else have any other information that needs sharing out? All right, then I will ask, Mrs. Laird said that she would help us with the board recap, so I'll turn to her.
Let me take a look at these notes. Everything has passed this evening and it looks like Rush Henrietta is shining through our work with different groups, being able to present at different committees throughout the community. And I believe we have an upcoming policy meeting, first week in November.
November 6th.
November 6th, 7:00 AM, bright and early.
I also need note that the survey results will be out hopefully within the next week and the course guide will come back to us the next meeting for approval.
Okay.
All right. If there being nothing else for her, go to the cause. I will take a motion then to adjourn our meeting. Nikki and Mr. O'Brien there, James, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero.